Difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. And Clark, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Fever.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Logan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Thank you. Commissioner Fever will wish you a speedy recovery.
Well, I'm on this drug that's supposed to make sure that old people like me don't die. And you know, so. Yeah, I'll be okay in a few days. I promise.
All right, Commissioner Cummins, questions? I just got. You know, today I'm sure everybody heard about what happened yesterday and. I just want to reiterate my sincere appreciation. And so I had to write it down because I didn't want to forget anything. But I took some of it from the report that the. The Police Department sent us. I want to express my sincere thanks and appreciation to all the law enforcement agencies. That assisted in the alleged threats and intimidation. Logan Pallister was arrested at zero four hundred hours on the thirty first of May. Helena Police Department utilized SWAT teams, team members to make their arrest. Once arrested and booked in the detention center. The department contacted Lewis and Clark Sheriff's Office. The Explosive Ordinance Disposal Team. Due to the possibility. Of bomb devices in the vehicle. Missoula City County EOD Team was also utilized. They were above. They were able to locate four devices. Possibly pipe bombs in the vehicles. Plus a large number of weapons. Due to the potentially dangerous situation, tenants were evacuated. From the building where Pallister was residing. The vehicle was impounded. And Pallister's apartment was searched. On behalf of the City Commission, I want to thank the many law enforcement agencies. For the many hours they put into this situation. In order to keep our communities safe. This commission is proud of the work you've put into this. And we also want to thank members of the Lewis and Clark. Sheriff's Office, Missoula City County and ATF. And you know. We also want to thank the witnesses that brought it to the police attention. Thank you. And Godspeed. Any other commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would echo your comments. I think that. As someone who works in education and and used to teach in the classroom, the last. Week has been. I think difficult. And you know, sometimes when things are happening far away. It seems real, but. When the potential of such violence is happens in your community. It it just puts it in another perspective. So I agree and concur in your thanks to the Helena Police Department and all the partner. Law enforcement agencies and the community members who who spoke up when they saw something. I think it should be committed and applauded. It's not something that they, you know, law enforcement. Professionals choose to. To serve in courageous roles, but I think it's something when a member of the public who who. Is thrust into a position where they have to make a decision to say something or not, and they did. And I'm grateful that they did that and and that the Helena Police Department moved on that information so quickly and kept. Our our community and our kids safe. So we're just very grateful and. I hope that we can get to a place where this is not. Something that we have to be dealing with. And that teachers and students and schools and police departments are not constantly having to. Be on alarm and and alert. It's it's unfortunate, but very, very grateful. For how quickly you all moved.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd also like to express my thanks. To all involved in this. In how this. Played out and this morning we we received an email that was I I think. Sums it up as well as any. Anything that we could express. It's addressed to Chief Assistant Chief Brett Petty and every member of the Helena Police Department. Thank you. I am a member of the Helena Public Schools Board of Trustees. I am also the mother of a child at Helena High School. It's hard for me to describe my gratitude for your actions yesterday. Morning regarding the individual and the threats to Helena High. There are no theoretical children. Every one of them has a family to go home to and a future to live. I am indebted to you as a board member and parent. Yesterday was completely normal for our community. And our children. No one knows what may have happened if you and your force had not acted. I don't think anyone wants to know what we don't know. We know that you did that you all did your jobs professionally and quickly. You have my immense gratitude, Jennifer McKee, and I think she expresses. The sentiment of us all in in. Our thanks from Helena to you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. I don't have much to add. I think it has all been said, but as as the parent of a child in school in Helena. It has been it's been a tough few days. Getting that email from the school district was terrifying. And I was very pleased at how quickly everything was handled and and how comfortable I felt. So quickly after receiving a message like that, which no parent ever wants to get. So just to sum up what everybody has said, thank you to everybody who was involved. Thank you to the community members. I am grateful to live where I do.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I should concur with the remarks that have been made. I'm a grandparent of three children in our schools today and one on the way. Obviously, any parent or grandparent cares about their children in school. Schools should be a safe place for all of us, and it's just ridiculous that we are struggling with this epidemic in America today. But our police force and its help from other places helped save the day here. And so I'm very pleased with the professionalism and expertise of our police department. So thanks to them all.
Right. Recommendations from Helen's Council.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I haven't seen you in person in a long time. I'm Nancy Perry from HCC District Two. And I had two things that I wanted to mention to you. We had an HCC meeting last night on May thirty first. We discussed the final draft of HCC's report on our recommendations for the city's twenty twenty-three budget. And we discussed the final changes that our Treasurer Nolan Harris. And other members of the Budget Committee have made to the final report. And then we voted unanimously to accept the changes. You'll be receiving our report soon, much as last year when I was responsible for this report. The whole HCC gathered to help put this together. Everybody had their own. Area of expertise and so everybody weighed in, so the report actually represents our whole council. You will also receive, if you haven't already received it, our recommendation for changes that we propose to be made. To the crossing of East Broadway Street where it passes Jefferson Elementary School. Broadway is a thoroughfare for commuters to the Capitol as well as to the hospital. And it presents a really dangerous crossing for young children. I live on Broadway only a block away from Jefferson School, so I I know what I'm talking about. I know what the traffic is like on that street. There are two intersections that Jefferson Elementary children take to cross Broadway. Currently, the city is working on installing a new pedestrian protected crosswalk. Meaning it's the kind of crosswalk where there's a button you press and a flashing light tells, warns cars. That somebody's going to be crossing. They're installing a new pedestrian protected crosswalk. At the corner of Broadway and South Dakota Street, and that's on one side of Jefferson School. That's on the eastern side of Jefferson School. But one block west. Of that intersection on Broadway, so it'd be the other. Street that runs along the side of Jefferson School is the intersection with Staburn Street. And a child was recently struck by a vehicle and that child was struck at that intersection at Staburn Street. It wasn't. Struck up on South Dakota Street. So we are recommending that a second pedestrian protected crossing be put also at the intersection. With Staburn Street so that there are two safe ways that the children at Jefferson can get across the street. And that's all I've got. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Do we have any comments or questions for Ms. Bear?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. Greatly appreciate. We did get the recommendations for the budget and I always enjoy reading through the HCC recommendations. So really appreciate the time that you all put into that. My question is on the. Jefferson School crossings. Did you all send this to MDT as well?
I'm not aware that we did. Is that your recommendation or is that the usual way to do it also?
Well, I don't know. I might look to the. City Manager, would it be? I mean, I know that we're obviously having discussions with MDT about getting the. Speed limit lowered, I believe, to fifteen miles an hour. Could we also send this on and ask that they, you know, ensure that they're staying part of the conversation?
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, we can, and. As as you know, Director Knopki is engaged with MDT on this very project, so there's coordination taking place as we speak.
Okay, great. I think it's just helpful that MDT knows it's not just the commission. Bringing up this issue and and if you and parents, but. You know, a a second body that is elected by the people of Helena, who also believe that it's important.
Mayor, Commissioner, we'll make sure that they're aware of that. Yes, and I see Director Knopki hand is raised, so. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, we are in direct communication with MDT on this project. They. Last high their their commission meeting, I believe they passed the. Approval for changing that to the fifteen mile an hour zone. We just not, we just haven't received the official notice on that. Once we do get that, we'll start planning the revised signage for the area and. Getting a assigned detail in, and then we are working with them at evaluating. The what what need what's needed for those two crossings. And so they're they're well aware of the of the two crossings there. They're just trying to evaluate. As far as what improvements they foresee since this is a part of their jurisdictional roadways.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions for Representative Nancy? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Senate Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and with your permission, I'd like to invite Director Danielson up to speak to. The remaining process of the budget and also speak to the four forty fund whereby the. Commission last week asked us to come back with the joint recommendations for your consideration.
Thank you. You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, City Manager Burton, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to follow back up with you that after our last budget administrative meeting, the commission that had recommended that. That directors come back with their final recommendations for proposal of spending general capital dollars. I believe you have received a copy of that. If not, I think that they're at the back of the room. The directors did get together and they collaboratively worked on submitting a final. Submission for general capital dollars. They include the requests from the Police Department, Human Resources Department for their office remodel. Public Works Department for their office remodel. Some maintenance out at the pool. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the Civic Center Civic Center. HVAC system with the thoughts that we could seek more potential. Grant funding, ARPA funding for the remainder of the HVAC system at the Civic Center. And then the parks maintenance and. Equipment requests that they they were able to pare down and and come up with just about the one point three million dollars. That we recommended for spending on general capital. If you have any other questions on that, I can address them now, or if you had any other recommendations, we can certainly take that under advisement.
Comments or questions for Director Danielson?
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Hey, Commissioner.
Thank you, Director Danielson. And I'm not sure if this question is for you or for Mr. Burton, but. It is my presumption that things that have been moved off of this list or deprioritized will. In many cases, reappear on an ARPA request list. Is that an accurate guess?
Mayor, Commissioner, I think that that certainly is possible either through city staff or. The governing body itself, and I think that once we get to the point. Where the commission has established. Guidelines and a process for ARPA, I think we'll better be able to speak to that, but certainly we're gonna. Want the opportunity to bring forth some city requests when you're considering the allocation of those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I might just a quick follow up.
Please.
One of the things that would be helpful is maybe if you could just very briefly give us an overview of of what criteria were used to prioritize. Because some of the requests. Appeared to me to to maybe be more timely now as opposed to next year, so I'm assuming timeliness was one of the factors. What else did departments use? In order to make their determinations. Thank you.
Mayor, please go ahead. Commissioners. You know, we had a discussion in the administrative meeting about. Critical needs and versus wants, and this represents our best. Recommendations forward to the critical needs that at the time are unmet with our with our requested list, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fever.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Director. I'm grateful that you have come up with a priority list. Unfortunately, because I've whatever, I'm here and not there. I do not have a copy of your. List, and so if someone could email it to me, that would be better. Don't put it in the chat because I. I'd rather it just be emailed to me. I I think that at this point in time, it's or the other suggestion would be you go through each one of these items on the four forty page and. Check mark what you want, or as you see as a need as the city manager just described, which I think is appropriate. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Fever, just to advise you, we did email that document to you earlier today, so if you do have access to your email, you should be able to. Access it as we speak. I can also resend it if you'd like.
Please do. You know, I thought I checked my email pretty vigorously, but you know, there's a lot of email and I may have missed. I'm sorry.
No problem. I'll send that right now.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions for Director Danielson?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just have a specific question on one of the items. On the Veterans Memorial Park, under Parks and Recreation, Parks Capital Fund, the hundred, under the hundred and five thousand. We have ten thousand dollars for feasibility study and design. When we'd when it was on the previous document we had. It was my understanding that I thought that was repainting it, like doing some of the actual work, but is this just the review of what the work would be? And then which would give us the estimate? Or is that the actual work? Do we know?
Commissioner Dean, I think I defer that to City Manager Burton, or if our Parks Director Christie Pinozzo is here, defer that question to her.
Director Pinozzo, are you available?
Mayor, this is Director Pinozzo. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Yes, Mayor, Commissioner Dean. That ten thousand dollars represents the long term fix for the. Issues that we have at the Veterans Memorial so that we can look at feasibility and design and what exactly we're going to do there. In the interim, my staff will work on getting it to the best place possible for the. I think there's some. Ceremonies going on this this summer and this fall, so we'll do the best we can to get in a in a acceptable. Place.
Okay, just a quick follow up so that. We already are budgeted in staff time and materials to be able to do those. Interim fixes for it is the eightieth anniversary of the first special services this summer. That started here in Helena, which is very cool.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner Dean, we are. We have that built into our budget already. Thank you.
And Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I would also add that we're coordinating through Director Pinozzo with the committee that oversees the memorial.
Okay, I just have one, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm asking it anyway. On the Civic Center, there is a potential grant funding.
Mayor, we're going to come back to the commission to seek ARPA funding for that. If not ARPA funding, I know that the the Parks Director and her direct reports are also looking at. Whether or not they can apply for other types of grant funding for that particular project as well.
Okay, I didn't know the answer then.
So Mayor, if I could just add, so the the way to read that part of your of your report is we have the three hundred and fifty thousand grand. Then the four forty adds three fifty, so we have seven hundred thousand, if you agree. To fund it that way of the one point two million dollar project. So we're whittling away at it.
Thank you. Any final comments for Director Danielson?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just a quick follow up to to the answer we just got. So if if there was agreement to contribute from the general fund. Prior to any discussion about ARPA. It's my understanding from the last meeting that there could still be a partial project or part of the HVAC system done. Because if we agree to some of it now, but there's no guarantee that ARPA will fund the rest of it, does it make any sense to fund part of it now?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes, that is correct. They can do the the HVAC system in two different sections and. Handle them as different projects, whereas half the funding could move forward with with. Doing one part of the the Civic Center, like the ballroom and then the. The other half of the Civic Center. They can do those as separate projects, and so half of the funding will get them half of that project done.
Thank you. Commissioner Fever.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and City Manager, as I recall, this is the memorial. Will be about a thirty thousand dollar project, and I may have that wrong, but the county and the city were each going to contribute maybe ten. The memorial organization, the five one C three. Maybe doesn't have ten, but it can fundraise, and you know, I would like to see if we're going to put the money into this, which I really want us to do. That we do it all in one fell swoop, and if there's any way we can. Get to the thirty grand, which they were talking about at the meeting you and I both attended. I would like to see some confirmation on that. Before we just slide the money out the door so that it gets done as expeditiously as possible. My understanding is this would be a full rebuild, in large part, not simply paint.
Mayor, Commissioner Fever, that's my understanding as well, and. I understand exactly what you're saying in terms of coordinating with the county and the in the committee in the city. And I think that the budget line item that we have in the Park and Rec Department fulfills our part of that. Three-way partnership, and we'll continue to engage the committee and the county on this project. Very important project.
I concur that our I'm I'm good with our ten grand. I would go more, but I see the priorities are what they are. But the city could assist maybe the Memorial Committee in the fundraising efforts that it if it wants to employ. I think they only have about six thousand dollars in actual expendable revenue, and that's they're about four thousand short if they expend all of that. But if we can just promote this heavily when they get into their fundraising campaign, that would be very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Director Danielson?
I just.
Mr. Mayor, I just, this is more for staff in general. I just would like to really thank. Your Manager Burton and and staff for bringing forward this list because I we were sort of at the point last week, maybe where. The five of us. Perhaps. Picked and chose and. Staff knows operations better than than any of us, and and so this is very helpful. To understand. I know there's great need and and just to have you prioritize that is. Very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have two more questions. Both are for parks. The first one is the on the pedestrian mall electrical repairs. Can you confirm those are the ones that are for like being able to plug in food trucks or bands or lights? Is that correct?
Um, Mayor, Commissioner, I believe so. They had started some electrical upgrades with, they had received thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funding. There was a stage that was purchased and they had already done some electrical upgrades down there, and this will help them. They have a balance. From that, and then they're using that with this remainder amount to continue the electrical improvements for that.
Excellent. And then my last question is on the key FOB system for the Parks Maintenance Shop. So it's. I'm gonna assume that this is consistent with. FOB. Entry into the buildings that will be getting soon. Is that something that? Other buildings. Not the city county building or the the pillar building or the law and justice center. Is that something that they are all paying for out of their budgets? As well, or are those buildings not getting the FOB entry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I do know that. You know, management of these facilities run through runs through a different budget. I'll have to defer to maybe our facility superintendent Troy Simpson to answer that question.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean. I know that the Parks Superintendent needed some access control to his facility. And he was bringing that forward in his budget.
Okay, so there are two separate separate things.
Separate projects, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Dr. Danielson, thank you. Are you done?
Mayor, if I may, I just have a few other items to go over as far as our budget process, so. We have been pulling our budget document together today. We did get the communication from the HCC. To include in the budget book. We'll be getting that posted today. We're just doing some final formatting and getting it uploaded, so. It will be available to you and to the public. As of the end of today. We are. Still looking for. Some some looking at, you know, what changes might have happened from, you know, your admin meetings to the to the final budget. There weren't. You know, this preliminary, there weren't that many, although there were a couple of staffing changes that moved out around, but there they weren't. They weren't significant changes. And the capital outlay by division will be in your book so that you can clearly identify, you know, all of the capital throughout the. The fund details and a more succinct banner in the in the capital section of the budget book. We will have our first official, you know. Public meeting for the preliminary budget document on the on June sixth. At that time, you'll have an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions or get any public comment on that preliminary budget. We will set some time aside on June fifteenth to do kind of a wrap up. Of budget discussions if needed, and then we'll bring back the preliminary budget as a for a public hearing on June twenty seventh. In July, we plan on bringing our all of our fee and rate resolutions to be adopted. Um, in July, we plan on bringing um our, all of our fee and rate resolutions to be adopted, and then final budget adoption will be September 12th. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that process if you have any. Otherwise, that's the end of my, my presentation.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, just on um kind of the logistics that Director Danielson outlined, sometimes um in the past, we've had different things come up throughout our budget sessions where people mention what amendments they might or might not be interested in. Um, and I know just from my experience the last two years, it was more helpful when those happened. And I will fully admit that I am at fault uh my first year for not being um as careful about when, when they came up. Um, and so trying to learn from that. But I guess just for the full Commission's understanding, if there are amendments that folks are thinking about, do you have any recommendations or suggestions to the Commission about how we should maybe be thinking about those? And because as soon as you, you know, pull one thing over here, something else happens over there. Um, and so I want to be thoughtful of all of the work that staff have already obviously put into this and then bringing back to us, you know, priorities, but I also don't want to be in a situation where um the last day we um maybe are having to make a lot of decisions that we may not understand, um, you know, if there's significant implications.
Um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. Yes, I I would recommend that you take the opportunity to look through the budget book that's being posted today and at June 6th. Um, any amendments would need to be um a required vote from the Commission uh with, you know, a majority vote to to add them to the budget book and to the preliminary budget. Those amendments can also be brought forward at the public hearing um when we adopt the preliminary budget. And I can also um ask Manager Burton if he has anything to add to that.
Uh, yes, thank you, Director. Uh Mayor, Commissioner, the way I see it also working is we'll have the presentation on the 6th, and we'll reserve time on the 15th for the very discussion that you're talking about, the 15th being the administrative meeting. And then, you know, if there are changes that you agree to, we can prepare that for uh the following Commission meeting, uh and you can take action at that time as well.
Okay, Commissioner Reed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm I'm pleased to hear you say that, Mr. Burton. So I I don't know that I would be able to have everything ready for the 6th. That's a very short turnaround if the the budget book is going out tonight. So will there be amendments on both the 6th and the 15th? Or will we be, I I'm I'm not clear on that. I also unfortunately will not be able to attend the meeting on the 6th, so I'd like to make sure there is an opportunity for me to submit amendments should I have them other than on Monday, which would be very difficult.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I I believe that on the 15th, and it'll be informal, but if generally there's agreement that you want to consider uh an amendment, we can talk about it on the 15th, prepare the formal amendment for uh the following City Commission meeting whereby you can vote just discuss and vote on a- actual amendments to the budget. And if there are any thoughts, Mayor, about particular amendments that you have right now, please give them to us so that we can get it prepared for a Commission discussion at either one of the meetings.
Commissioner Fever.
I'm good with that, um, City Manager. I I like that process that goes, does give us time. And I like the informality of an admin meeting where we can talk about our stuff without that voting up or down. So we got time. Thank you very much.
Any final comments for Director Danielson? Director Danielson, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a comment?
Mayor, I have one other item if you'll allow.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is.
Improvement Plan.
Pardon me?
Is that the Capital Improvement Plan discussion you don't?
No, uh Director Danielson went over that. This is uh th- this has to do with the email addresses that we use here at the city. And it's my recommendation uh that that we eliminate the Mayor and Commission email address. And I make that recommendation not lightly, uh but I think for good reason. Number one, it's not a staffed address. Beside the point, I mean, we could fix, figure that out and fix that, but the greater concern that I have with the Mayor and Commission email address is the fact that it automatically presents the potential of a quorum uh in communications with the public or anybody else. Uh, not that that's the intent. But I think that there is the risk uh that that could present problems relative to public notice, uh quarums, quasi judicial issues, et cetera. If there's no objection, then I will work with the IT Department to take that out uh of the IT system as an address. Now, if we do that, the Mayor's address and all the Commissioners' addresses will still be available, so that if the public wants to visit with one of you or all of you, there they'll still have your email address. It just doesn't present the quorum troublesome issue, I think, that that particular address has. So with that, Mayor, I recommend that we uh not use that email address. Uh, and I would proceed unless I hear objection from either the Mayor or some Commissioners.
Thank you, uh Manager Burton. I will, okay, so comments or questions from the Commission? I see Commissioner Fever and is up.
Yes, thank you. Um, City Manager, I I actually like your proposal, but I'm worried if all we get is an individualized email from some citizen who wants something or other. We won't know that they sent it to anybody else. And so we'll have some issue as to whether you know, I guess we could always ask them, have you contacted the rest of the Commission? Am I the only Commissioner you're talking to? Um, I think there is a, there's a sense there of uh, how do you want to call it? Being uncertain as to how to proceed going forward, because as you know, a lot of the email, at least we get right now, and I, and I had to learn how to do this right, so I wasn't sending it back to everybody. But a lot of the email we get right now is asking us to effectively bring something to you or to one of our directors. And um I wouldn't want five different Commissioners bringing the same thing if you follow to, but all that could happen right now. Uh, I guess I don't object. I just uh think that there might be some problems as it develops going forward, just saying.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, a couple of things. One, I always appreciate, appreciate mitigating risk. Um my second point or question, I guess, would be, I I think that we um we really do need some sort of um venue for the public to submit comment. Um, because frequently we, when we get emails to that Mayor and Commission, it is folks that just want their comments in the public record. Not necessarily a request of a Commissioner um or a service request for staff, but an opinion that wants to be in in the public record. Um, I know that the, in, within the Clerk's Office, there has been an ongoing project to digitize all of our operations um in a way that's we can get to um digitally and also um just in a more organized fashion. And I believe within that, there's a functionality for a form that can be um created. Um, and I'm looking to the City Clerk now because I'm wondering, is it possible? And if the City Manager would be in agreement, is it possible to just put a form on the website for folks to submit whatever comment and or maybe that's where they put in a service request, because we oftentimes, like Commissioner Fever says, we do get service requests that the Commissioners um don't necessarily take any action on. It goes on to the Director for the department in which it it is appropriate, and then that gets addressed. Um, and so I'm wondering, is there a way that we can not limit access to the, from the, for the public to providing comment? That's maybe the more generic piece, as well as having our emails available.
Thank you. Um. You know, for me, um, I'm always worried when I see uh the Mayor and Commission come by be uh uh come across our desk, because uh I'm always wondering, oh, did Commissioner Logan respond to this, or did Commissioner Dean respond to this? So I mean, uh, the access to the public does not diminish at all, because um the um, the public can actually contact whoever they want to contact, because that Mayor and Commissioner email goes everywhere to Directors who are not even involved in whatever the individual is trying to relay. It goes to Director, it goes to the independent record, and and those are um communications. I don't know if that's where the um the public wanted to convey their message. So whomever they want to convey the message to, it's still available for them to do that. And I see even on the Mayor Commissioner email, I see them put Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, Commissioner this, Commissioner that. That means those are the people it's going to, and that is not being erased at all. That is not eliminated, so it can still be on. And so with me, I agree with you uh that uh Manager Burton, I think we should get rid of it, and the community can still contact whomever they want to contact. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, I'm comfortable with your approach. But I'm also, you know, looking forward to uh what the Clerk's been working on relative to, you know, public engagement and not. So, yes, I'm I'm with you. It has created some problems, like as has been alluded to, that we might get a service request. And there's about 40 addresses on that Mayor and Commission, and all right, who's taking this, you know, and and so there's, there're potential for community or confusion and and uh so, yeah, thank you.
One person, uh, Madam Clear.
Mayor, I I was, the reason I raised my hand was to ask uh if uh
Oh, okay, so we're thinking.
Explain uh how we're going to respond to some of the concerns that you've brought up.
Um, sure, Mayor Commissioners, um, I would agree with all the statements as sort of the office that manages in recent days, that Mayor and Commission email as your staff, folks, uh the Deputy and myself. There are a number of concerns with that particular email address um for as the City Manager referenced, public access, uh transparency issues. To that end, with the former City Manager, um, and that office, I was working with the Public Information Officer and the Special Projects Manager on what Commissioner Dean was referencing, a form. Um, we want the public to still have access to their elected officials, and we recognize that sending a single email may not always suffice, or it can create confusion, or I think a number of you have brought up with me equal access amongst yourselves to information. So what we've been working on in recent days is a form that would act as a public comment form that would offer an opportunity for the public to reference specific agenda items or general topics. And that item would then be routed to each of you as a separate um individual form to each one of your inboxes. We're running tests hopefully this next week on that, so I would try and coordinate the City Manager's Office on the end date. Hopefully with that Mayor and Commission email, so we maybe can coincide the two launching. Um, in reference to the question about service requests, uh we do have a number of options that exist already. Contact information is on our website already for each individual department. Um, there is also the My Helena app, which gets a lot of traction and is very useful. And then we would also have the general question form that would be in conjunction with the public comment form. I I still need to vet some of that with the City Manager's Office, and so I would continue to work on that project with them as well. And that might maybe shore up some of the voids or gaps that remain. So I know that we've had these discussions each, each of you with me individually, and I'm open to any other suggestions you have for the City Manager.
Thank you. But, and just to add, the server requests to the Mayor and Commissioner will still continue. I mean, they will still be able to email us if there is a server's request, and we will be able to forward it on to Manager Burton. So I mean, that does not eliminate this service request, you know, so. Anyway, do we have any other comments or questions? Oh, go ahead.
So Mayor, after listening to this discussion, uh we will proceed to work our way toward uh eliminating the Mayor and Commission address, coordinating with the Clerk's Office. Uh, it's not going to happen tomorrow, uh but we want to make sure that the system that the Clerk's Office is putting together is functional, uh that we just don't immediately turn it off. But we'll keep you informed as we walk down that road.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, uh, we're at information-only communi- Community Development Department presentation of the Downtown Tiff Advisory Board recommendation, recommended fiscal year 23 work plan and application update. Director Brink, do you have any? And and Planner Ray, are you tag teaming?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this will not be a common theme, but I'm going to devote my presentation to staff uh for these particular next couple of issues. You've had a dedicated staff knowledgeable that have done amazing work through this transition. I would like to reward them by them continuing that, by making these presentations to you this evening. Um, so with that, for the Downtown Tiff, um Ms. Ray will will be making that presentation. But I've got Mr. Alvarez and Ms. McConnell, um who will be making the presentations for the Road Route District. So you will get tired of me eventually, but there will be a time where I will make my own presentations, but this evening, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So I I feel like I say this in the course of every presentation, but in the interest of your time, I will try to keep this brief, as always. So I just wanted to quickly present to you, um, give you some context for what's coming before you next Monday um as a consent agenda item. The Downtown Tiff Advisory Board have been holding meetings since the start of this year to try and prioritize all the goals and objectives that are stated in the Downtown Urban Renewal District Plan. Um, in an effort to figure out what their prioritized project recommendations for you will be, um that will be part of the work plan for FY23. We went through a similar effort with the Railroad District a few years ago. Um, just as a heads up to you all, we are revisiting that discussion again with the current board for the Railroad Tiff District. But the present Downtown Tiff Advisory Board have put forward recommendations for six areas of prioritized projects that they'd like to recommend funding for. Um, they are related to infrastructure, um site redevelopment and public space activation. Some of these are things that we've already received applications for that you have granted funding for. I should note the Downtown Urban Renewal District Housing Program to promote affordable housing development in the district, the retention and development of such housing. A facade improvement program, um, marketing and branding projects. And also uh the Cruz Avenue Redevelopment Program, which we've had a lot of planning efforts around in recent years um with my colleague Mike McConnell at the helm. Um, and also, lastly, the Rodney Street Commercial Center um program. So those are the areas that they would recommend and prioritize funding for. Um, it does not mean that if other applications arise that um hit some of the other goals and objectives from the plan that align with both the plan and the growth policy, that they shouldn't be afforded consideration. It's just these ones are the ones that they feel are the priority areas for funding. With those discussions, they also um for the first time unanimously voted to recommend that there be a match requirement for the applications. To date, we have not had that for any of the projects within the Downtown Tiff District. Um, so this will create a little parity and certainty for prospective applicants as they seek funding. Um, the levels are stated in the materials and the memos that you received, but it is that um for projects that are in excess of $10,000, applicants can request up to 50% match, and for those under 10,000, they can request up to 25% match for whatever the project is. Um, so that is the sum total of what I wish to present to you for today. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Do we have any comments or questions for Planner Ray?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just have two questions.
Go ahead.
Really good presentation. Thank you, and thanks for leading um this advisory board to, um, I always enjoy reading the minutes and you're always so knowledgeable in them um in your discussions with the board, so appreciate that. Um, my first question is, and I think this is a no-brainer, but I just want to ensure it's on the record. I just want to ensure it's on the record that when we talk about pedestrian improvements that could include sidewalk improvements in the Downtown Tiff District?
Mayor and Commissioner, yes, it can include sidewalk improvement projects. I should note that one such project, a portion of a project coming before you next Monday includes some sidewalk improvements.
Okay, great. And then my other question was, one of the things I constantly hear from folks downtown is surrounding wayfinding. And I think that could probably be included in the branding and marketing umbrella. But I want to ensure that, you know, if there was a project that came forward, whether from the city or, you know, another entity to further enhance our wayfinding, including like an actual entrance into downtown or something like that, would that qualify under this application process, given the draft that's here?
Mayor Commission, yes, that is the intention, as is called out under the marketing slash branding project program. The wayfinding component is a particular part of that.
Great, thanks.
Comments or questions for Planner Ray? I just promoted her. Thank you, Planner Ray. So our next item here is railroad neighborhood plan.
Yep, bear with me.
Take your time, take your time. Got it?
Okay, so Mayor Commissioners, thanks for putting us on the agenda today. We've been kind of working on this for a while. As you may or may not know, I'm sure you do, that we recently updated our growth policy a couple of years ago. And one of the directions is that we conduct most of our planning efforts through neighborhood plans. And it's been on.
Planner, is it possible for the pull the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. But on now, no? There we go. Okay, so sorry about that. Hopefully you guys heard me. We're going to be embarking on some neighborhood planning efforts. And the first one that we have decided to go with is a railroad district neighborhood plan. So like I said, we have recently updated our growth policy. And for those of you who don't know, a growth policy is essentially a long range master planning document, right? It's non regulatory, it relies on the zoning code, the subdivision regulations, engineering standards, et cetera, to bring forth the vision of that of that plan. So there are certain elements that are state mandated that have to be included. Some of those you can see there, some of those elements are more relevant, some are not as relevant. Gravel resources, for example, maybe not as relevant in town. So this is a map from the growth policy and it shows several locations where we already have some planning efforts either completed or underway. Downtown, for example, already has a neighborhood plan as the first one that the city's done. This effort that I'm talking about tonight will be the first one that falls under the current growth policy. So the other two are the Capitol Hill Mall, which has a U R D plan. And then also the Railroad District, which also has the U R D. So this.
Called the Capitol Hill Mall, is there a new need for it now?
I'm sure there is, I'm sure there is. It escapes me at the moment, so we'll go with Capitol Hill Mall for now. This in the black on the left hand side of the screen is specifically what the growth policy says about neighborhood plans. It's in both goals, objectives. And what makes this growth policy different than the last one is it includes action items which kind of guide us to creating the vision, the overall vision of the growth policy, right? So really, we're talking about action item thirty-four and thirty-five. Thirty-four is that we complete neighborhood plans. And then thirty-five is creating the process for those locations, the selection of those locations, so that the public knows we're not just, you know, throwing darts here. There's actually a methodology here, and I'll go into that right now. So on the right hand side, you can see this is in broad strokes, the the methodology that we've went with, we wanted to be directly engaging the public, other departments, and then some of our boards and and other committees as well. And I'll go into those now. So the survey, we use Be Heard Helena, which we were just sort of talking about. We actually had way more responses than I personally thought we were going to have, which was very exciting. And generally, the questions were framed in a way that said, when you walk out of your front door, you know, what do you see? Where can you go? What can you do? Or conversely, what can't you do? Where can't you go? So that we could kind of get an idea about some trends in the city overall. Then we used that information to inform our G A S analysis. And for those that don't know, G A S is a mapping software that we use. It's an incredibly powerful tool that we traditionally haven't really used to its fullest extent. And we're starting to do that, so that's encouraging. You can see there, that's just a snippet from the survey responses is pedestrian mobility was kind of one of the one of the main responses that we got. In some cases, positive, in some cases, negative. So the positive ones, you could see where those were clustered. And the negative ones, you could see where those were clustered too. So it was ultimately a pretty successful survey. And we can definitely thank Michael Alvarez for that. He was the principal author. This is one of the maps that we used in our analysis. It's a value per acre map. Red is low value per acre and green is high value per acre. Maybe you can see, maybe you can't see, but downtown is very green. And some of the neighborhoods around town are mostly red. If you look at the west side, or if you look at the railroad district, if we zoomed in, we would see that most of those properties are in the orange and the red categories, low value per acre. So indicating maybe these would be areas that would benefit from a neighborhood planning effort. So these are the criteria that we used. Once we identified, you know, several options there, and I'll just go around the star, I guess. Accessibility, you know, how do you get there? Are there barriers? Are there opportunities? In this case, it's, you know, right by Highway twelve, North Montana Avenue. Has a fairly mature sidewalk network, et cetera. Institutions and mix of uses. The Railroad District has Helena College, it has the high school, it has Bryant School. Lincoln School is right over there, Stewart Home. So there's a there's a large, a large degree of variety in terms of what is happening there on the ground right now. So are there place making opportunities? And I think the Railroad District is one of our more recognizable areas in town, right? If you ask someone in the north valley, north valley, where the Railroad District is, they're going to know where it is, right? Development or redevelopment opportunities, I think we can see that in the map that I just showed. Areas where there are a lot of red parcels, there might be more opportunities for redevelopment. You have the cared property, you have Lincoln School, which I believe is unused at the moment. So there's tremendous opportunity in the Railroad District. And that's definitely one of the reasons why we are selecting it. The infrastructure expansion is sort of the wild card here. Either the neighborhood has some sort of expansion or improvement in place, or it might need an expansion or improvement of the infrastructure. And I think the Railroad District definitely fits that bill. And like I said, we don't make these decisions in a vacuum, right? We are going to be engaging partners, both internal and external. You know, as we go through this process, currently, we've went to the planning board because they are ultimately responsible for the creation of the growth policy. And this neighborhood plan would be an amendment to the growth policy as the downtown neighborhood plan currently is. And we're hoping that both the planning board and the H C C will be involved in the creation of this neighborhood plan and ones that we do in the future. We have presented before the H C C and got a lot of valuable feedback from them. They're kind of a direct conduit to their constituents, right? Where the commission is at large, H C C is very specific. And they have, to a certain degree, access to people within their districts. So we're hoping that we can leverage that to create a more representative plan for the Railroad District. These are a couple of other organizations that we hope to partner with. Various service organizations, the builders seem appropriate, definitely. M B A C is our economic development organization in Lewis and Clark County. And obviously, the Railroad Tiff Board, they're going to be integral in this effort in our minds. So for the process going forward, like I said, we have selected the Railroad District as our first option. And we now need to create an R F P, vet them, and select a firm, contract with that firm, and then begin the planning process. So that's what I've got for you tonight. I was hoping to have a discussion. So if there's any questions, any comments from the commission, any direction from the commission, we'd be happy to entertain that now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Landon McConnell. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, you know me too well. Thank you for the presentation, really excellent. I think that the Railroad District truly is the ideal next neighborhood center plan to be developed. And I think it's really neat because kind of the three neighborhoods in which we'll first be looking at downtown railroad and then potentially Capitol Hill, Capitol Hill, Urban Renewal District, whatever we're going to call it. You know, late nineteenth century, we had, there was literally a boardwalk that went from the Railroad District to downtown, back to the Capitol and made a big triangle. And I think that it's just neat that we are staying consistent and revitalizing the areas that so much happens for a community. One thing that I would just like to provide some comment on, and as you're thinking about the R F P process and everything else, I think that if we could find someone that has some experience in working with state agencies, it will be ideal. I think that developing and implementing the plan for the Railroad District is going to be probably a little bit more difficult than the improvements we've been able to make downtown, simply because access to this area is so limited because of the way that malfunction junction is developed. And so very close coordination with M D T is going to be critical. And I know that our staff does a really good job of working across departments. But that that piece of another agency being involved is obviously going to be, you know, potentially the Achilles heel of ensuring that this redevelopment truly lives up to what we envisioned for it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reed, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McConnell. Just a question slash comment. I know that there are discussions about safe routes to schools and other conversations about, you know, different parts of town. And I think it would be great as this process moves forward, if we could coordinate those efforts. I know one of the points you mentioned was accessibility. And I know that that district in particular has extremely wide streets, very limited sidewalks. And to the extent that we can sort of bring efforts together and address all those things at once, I think it would be great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Landon McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McConnell, thanks for the presentation. Could you go back to the, just the previous slide, please? So I'm not misquoting. So the process and partnerships. So this is neighborhood plan. And is it the Helena Citizens Council that's primarily responsible for the outreach? Or to the folks that live in that particular neighborhood? Or is it, how do you see that playing out?
Mayor Commissioners, I believe that, I would not say that they would be primarily responsible, right? We are ultimately primarily responsible for that outreach. We have been looking for ways to leverage their information, their database of folks who live in their districts to a greater degree for a while. I think we envision the H C C as a supplementary organization to our own efforts.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but there's a pretty engaged community down there. And so, and they've actually, I would say, probably members, other members of the commission would agree that they've been pretty, they've reached out to us. And so, you know, certainly like to see them as being integral to this as it moves forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions for Planner McConnell from the commission? Okay. Landon McConnell, thank you. See, information only overview on the operation of the Integrated Solid Waste Management System between the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County, and how the system is currently funded. Director Leland and/or Deputy Director Coleman, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, we brought this forward last week at the budget meeting. We had some requests, if someone could come forward and give an overview of what the solid waste plan is and our system that we have currently going. It dates back to the late eighties, when the city and the county started to get together on how they are going to do solid waste for the overall residents of Lewis and Clark County and the city with the closure of the landfill, which is now Centennial Park, and then the scratch gravel landfill that was for the county residents. So then there were starting to be discussions. And what came out of it is that the county is going to take the landfill and start a landfill, own the landfill, and then the city is going to do a transfer station. And we have interlocal agreements with our partners that have been very, very beneficial to the residents over the years to make sure that it works together, that the county residents provide tonnage to the transfer station, and then the city uses the landfill. It's a very good organization and has worked out to our benefit extremely well. And then just some of the other ones, we started recycling in ninety-three. So it goes back. Helena was the first town in Montana to actually start recycling. I just put that as a little note. So we have been going a long time when we're talking diversions and everything along those lines. So the plan is very integrated. And we'll give you an overview of how it currently operates. And we'll have Jackie Pearson come up and take a look. And then as far as the funding, how it all operates, because we have a lot of different funds. We have city, county, we have commercial residential transfer station, the closed landfill, how it all kind of integrates and be able to fund it. So it is a very, I don't want to say complicated. I just want to say there's a lot of moving parts of where everything goes. And this is trying to come down and explain it to everyone and so that they have a better understanding of that. So with that said, oh, I just want to point out before I turn it over is we are currently looking at two plans that are moving forward. One that was last year put forward during the budget is the zero waste, the strategic plan from the C C B. You'll be seeing that in the next couple admin meetings to have the draft report forward. And then we are currently developing a scope and fee for the integrated master plan. And then we have a steering committee that Commissioner Logan is on. So those are two plans that are going forward to how we are going to move this overall solid waste system into the future. So it's an exciting time. And with that, I will turn over the overview of the integrated plan to Jack. Of the integrated plan to Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Leland. Mayor Commissioners, Jackie Pearson, um City of Helena, uh solid waste employee. My primary responsibility is out at the Lewis and Clark County landfill. Um, my position was created through the twenty fifteen Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan with Lewis and Clark County. And I will give an overview of our existing system. All right, um, so this first slide here, um, just point out a couple of pictures, um, that first top one there on the left. Um, that is the transfer station pit. Middle picture is the scale, and then that bottom picture is um of the current cell at Lewis and Clark County landfill, and there's the city truck dump in there. And my button's not working. Thank you. Uh, City of Helena Solid Waste Division, um, just got some bullet points here. Uh, City Helena, Lewis and Clark County has a longstanding partnership in integrated solid waste. Operation of a transfer station that serves City of Helena and Scratch Gravel uh District residents by agreement. Collection and transport of solid waste from residential homes within the City of Helena. The collection and transport of solid waste and cardboard from businesses within the City of Helena. Conducts a recycling program that serves City of Helena and Scratch Gravel District residents. Administers landfill monitoring district that ensures proper oversight and monitoring of the closed um. City of Helena landfill, excuse me. Transports collected solid waste to Lewis and Clark County landfill. Manages Lewis and Clark County landfill, Scratch Gravel District, Marysville District, and Augusta Solid Waste District through the interlocal agreement. Office staff administers all transfer station permits that include scratch gravel and Marysville County residents. Uh, city permits, uh recycling permits, and staff manages all permits from original mailout to billing overages. Transfer station uh provides service to approximately eighty-three thousand City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County residents. Serves as the collection point for all solid waste collected within the city and Scratch Gravel districts. Transports collected solid waste to the Lewis and Clark County landfill, provides administrative support for waste tracking, data collection, and customer service. Maintain six outlying recycling drop-off locations for public use seven days a week. Provides tipping accounts for customers and processes monthly billing. Approximately forty to forty-five thousand tons of waste is handled annually. And in FY twenty-one, there were a hundred and eighty-eight thousand vehicle transactions across the scale. Commercial solid waste uh advised with a private company for approximately two thousand commercial customers. Provide service to approximately six hundred and sixty-five of those commercial accounts. Offers pickup six days a week, Monday through Saturday. Provides uh or excuse me, service provided by automated frontload, sideload, and roll-off trucks. Provides a commercial cardboard collection service that collects cardboard for recycling annually, maintains data collection and processes monthly billing. Provides service for special events, um such as the Governor's Cup Alive at Five and athletic events. Maintains data uh generates bin repair and delivery and work orders for commercial customers and transports all recyclable commodities to the processor. Residential uh waste collection funded by approximately eleven thousand eight hundred City of Helena residential property assessments. Provides service to approximately thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty City of Helena residents. Services required by ordinance and City of Helena is the exclusive provider of residential collection within the city limits by city ordinance. Uh, operates five days a week, uh Monday through Friday. Collection days are based on location. Uh, includes fourteen GPS navigated residential routes. Service provided by automated side load trucks. Bulk waste pickup service uh provided by rearload service for bulky items. Maintains data, generates bin repair and delivery and work orders for residential customers. Offers city resident subsidized rates on curbside recycling through a contract with Helena Recycling. For curbside service, billing and bins are provided by the city. If this uh. Is completely voluntary and collection is handled through the private recycling company. Recycling operation, uh the recycling budget is jointly funded through the solid waste assessments. Uh, from property owners in the Scratch Gravel District as well as reg residential property owners in the corporate city limits for four-plex or less. Maintains recycling roll-offs at six locations for public use as well as providing roll-offs located at the transfer station. I wanted to mention the uh off-site locations uh for recycling handles, cardboard. Aluminum, paper, um. Uh, steel cans, um. Newspapers, mixed papers, that type of thing. What they don't accept at those um six off-site locations is plastics. Uh, number ones and number twos and glass. Um, admin tracks data and diversion rates on all recyclable materials. The transfer station um offers recycling for glass, aluminum, tin, newspapers, magazines, office paper, cardboard, phone books, e-waste. Oil, antifreeze, automotive batteries, tires, free-on-units, green waste, scrap metal, and plastic number ones and number twos. Um, the oil that's collected there is reused um as a heating fuel at multiple city and county facilities. This section goes into the Lewis and Clark County solid waste. Uh, Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena has a longstanding partnership in integrated solid waste. Through the twenty fifteen interlocal agreement, the City of Helena manages the Lewis and Clark County landfill, Scratch Gravel District, Marysville District, and the Augusta Solid Waste District. Operation of the Lewis and Clark County landfill serves the City of Helena Transfer Station, Marysville Transfer Sites. City of Helena wastewater and residential commercial landfill account holders. Landfill and Marysville sites conduct a scrap metal collection recycling program. Uh, administers a landfill monitoring program that ensures oversight and monitoring of the Lewis and Clark County landfill. As well as the closed Scratch Gravel landfill. Transports collected solid waste from the Marysville Transfer Site to the Lewis and Clark County landfill. The landfill itself um managed by the City of Helena through the interlocal established in twenty fifteen, the permitted landfill site is approximately eighty acres. With an additional hundred and sixty acres to the south for future landfill expansion. The landfill serves multiple customers to include Class Two MSW municipal solid waste. Class Four Construction Demolition Debris, Green Waste. Uh, that green waste, Lewis and Clark County, and a cooperative effort with the city processes green waste uh at the landfill, producing a high-quality compost. Uh, we accept liquid waste and we have a scrap metal recycling area. Uh, Lewis and Clark County Scratch Gravel and Marysville Districts, uh Scratch Gravel District is funded by approximately fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three Scratch Gravel residents. Scratch gravel residents have the option to direct haul their waste to the City of Helena Transfer Station using their Scratch Gravel solid waste permit. Um, which is up to three thousand pounds every fiscal year. In addition, residents have the option for residential weekly pickup service through a fee-based private hauler. Lewis and Clark County pays tipping for all Scratch Gravel District residents collected by the private hauler tipped at. The City of Helena Transfer Station. Uh, Marysville uh is similar, um that is funded by five hundred and forty-seven Marysville District residents. Uh, Marysville residents also have the option to direct haul their waste to the Marysville Transfer Site. As well as the option to haul to the transfer station uh using their Scratch Gravel solid waste permit. Um, they also have the option uh for residential weekly pickup service through the fee-based private hauler. And then that waste is also um hauled into the transfer station and Scratch Gravel pays for the um. Debris brought into the transfer station. I did put a little map on here. It's kind of hard to see, um but we could provide a larger one if anyone um wants some more detail on that. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
And Mayor and Commission, now I'd like to bring Leah Anderson up to actually. Go through the funds and how it all intertwines the money that is involved. So you get the overview of what we're involved with. As far as Lewis and Clark and uh City of Helena now sort of gets into the funds and how everything uh fits together with that.
Okay. So do we have any question thus far from the commission? Commissioner.
I I think I might wait until after because I, it might be. One or both of you who want to answer, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. I am Leah Anderson. I am the City of Helena's Environmental Regulation Pretreatment Manager. I'll be giving you a presentation tonight on solid waste revenue expenditures overview. Where it comes from and where it goes. So. The materials can come, materials that are generated in Helena can go through a variety of different routes to get to their end destination. The city provides commercial collection as well as city roll-off collection. City residents pay a one hundred and seventy-six dollar ten cent solid waste assessment for collection. This covers self-haul. Um, weekly collection, the bulky items truck, and also the um onsite and offsite recycling. Scratch gravel residents pay ninety-two dollars uh for a solid waste assessment for self-haul. Residents may choose to pay an additional fee for the private. Haulers to haul their materials to the transfer station. Transfer station accounts are also charged at the scale and are billed monthly. These are for individuals that. Choose to use the. The facility even though they are not part of the county or the city. In addition, um, materials produced in Helena can be um contracted with private roll-off collection for. Commercial purposes, private commercial collection, and the city um. Contracts with private curbside recycling and composters for our curbside recycling and composting pickup. Once, once materials reach the transfer station, all inbound tons are charged fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents per ton for the tipping fee. This is a thirty-dollar and seventy-five-cent ton transfer station tipping fee. As well as the twenty-six-dollar Lewis and Clark County tipping fee. And composting materials are taken to Lewis and Clark County landfill for composting. Recycling materials can also be brought to the transfer station, and after they are collected, we are, we then take them to a private recycling compost facility. The. Materials collected through private curbside recycling and composters is taken to the private recycling and private recycling and compost facilities. And all of the um. Materials that are contracted for private roll-off collection and private commercial collection are taken to the Valley View landfill in Jefferson County. There are four main city funds. For solid waste, residential, commercial, the transfer station, and recycling. For residential, the solid waste assessment, the main revenue for it is the solid waste assessment. It's approved by the City Commission annually. The current solid waste assessment is one hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents set by resolution two zero six eight eight. Uh, the solid waste assessment currently makes up ninety-three percent of the residential revenue. Curbside recycling is one hundred and six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and makes up five percent. That is the fee that individuals pay the city for the contract of the private hauler. And another three percent for other revenues such as tipping overages, prorated. Fees, et cetera. Expenditures, the solid waste tipping fees that the residential pays to the transfer station is nine hundred and eighty-five thousand. Or nine hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-five, so thirty-two percent. Operations make up twenty-one percent, internal charges nine percent, curbside recycling is six percent. Uh, this is the money that we receive for the, from the individuals for the curbside recycling, and then the additional amount that the city pays to subsidize that. Then there's also seven percent for recycling transfer out. Um, in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In fiscal year twenty twenty-three, it will be bumped up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand. This is a number that is matched by the county. And capital outlay was twenty-two percent. So comparing fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal year twenty for the residential, um, revenue was two million, two hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and sixty-two. Expenditures approximately three million eighty thousand one hundred and forty-three for a total deficit of approximately eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-one. Fiscal year twenty, the revenue was two million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. And expenditures were two million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-seven for capital reserves of eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-six. For the commercial fund, commercial customers pay fees based on the city's commercial rate matrix. Commercial rate matrix is based on the size of the container and the frequency of pickup. Bigger containers, more frequent pickup, charge more. Commercially billed charges are seventy-five percent of the revenue. Roll-off container fees are fifteen percent of the revenue. Internal roll-off charges are eight percent, and other interfund transfers are about two percent. Expenditures, the solid waste tipping fees are approximately thirty-six percent of the expenditures. Operations are thirty percent. Internal charges are fifteen percent, capital outlay one fifteen percent, and four percent for other charges. Fiscally year twenty-one compared to fiscal year twenty, revenue for the commercial was one million, two hundred thousand four hundred and fifty-nine expenditures, one million, three hundred thousand, three hundred and eleven thousand sixteen. For a total deficit of approximately one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and fifty-seven. The revenue for fiscal year twenty was one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-four with expenditures of one million, ninety-four thousand seven and three. Capital reserves of one hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight. For the transfer station fund. The revenue for charges for service were ninety-five percent of the revenue. The county contributions were five percent. And others for. Were less than one percent. Expenditures, solid waste tipping fees paid by the county or paid to the county were about forty-five percent of the expenditures, operations thirty-five percent. Internal charges ten, purchase services four percent, and other about six percent. Fiscal year twenty-one compared to fiscal year twenty. The revenue was two million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight expenditures of two million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and ninety. For a capital reserve of approximately four hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. In fiscal year twenty, the revenue was two million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-eight expenditures, two million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred. Nine eighty-nine, capital reserves of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and nine. The recycling fund. The contributions, the revenue for the recycling fund mainly come from contributions from the county. And the solid waste residential fund. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two or twenty-one, it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand each. This year it is going up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand each. So the total for the revenue will go up to five hundred and fifty thousand for this portion. The sale of recycled commodities brought in a revenue of approximately eighty thousand three hundred and forty-six. And then for the expenditures, the operations were thirty-six percent of the expenditures. Recycling of all the commodities was an expenditure of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-six, and our composting contract was fourteen percent. At eighty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-four. So our net commodity recycling ended up being negative thirty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety. Recycling for fiscal year twenty-one for and fiscal year twenty twenty, sorry, fiscal year twenty. Revenue was approximately five hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty-five expenditures, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-one. For a total deficit of fifty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. In fiscal year twenty, revenue was four hundred and ten thousand one hundred and seventy-nine with expenditures of five hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-five for a total deficit of a hundred and one thousand. And six dollars. Um, the difference between the revenue and the expenditures for fiscal year twenty compared to fiscal year twenty-one is. The difference between the revenue and the expenditures for fiscal year 20 compared to fiscal year 21 is mainly due to the added influx from the city and the county in fiscal year 21. They both contributed an additional $50,000. The city overall for fiscal year 21, the revenue was 6,809,954 with expenditures of 7,346,630. A total deficit of approximately 536,676. For fiscal year 20, revenue was 6,693,504 with expenditures of 6,212,814 with a total capital reserves of 480,690. Now we'll move over into the county. The county landfill, revenue for this, for the county landfill, City of Helena's landfill fees made up 58% of their revenues. Special load fees for the class twos was 23%. Construction demolition landfill fees was 12%. And outside MSW landfill fees were 8%, other was less than 1%. Expenditures, their operations were 63%, capital outlay was 25% and their fixed costs were 12. Fiscal year 21 compared to fiscal year 20, revenue was 1,875,233. Expenditures 869,914 with the capital reserves of 1,5319. Fiscal year 20, revenue was 1,423,955. Expenditures 1,912 with 1,912,706 with a total deficit of 488,751. For the county scratch gravel, the assessments totaled $1,298,000 and $1,298,622 and was 99% of their revenue. The expenditures, the City of Helena tipping fees were 91% of their expenditures, operations 8% and fixed charges 1%. County scratch gravel fiscal year 21 compared to fiscal year 20, revenue was 1,316,626. Expenditures 1,431,021, total deficit of 114,395. Revenue for fiscal year 20 was 1,316,034 and expenditures was 1,333,241 with a total deficit of 17,207. Marysville, this assessment is, is rather small assessment, but it produces revenue of $42,700, which is 90% of its revenue. An additional 2% comes from their pay as you throw program. Expenditures, operations were $18,371 were more approximately 68% of their expenditures. Their fixed charges were 8,827 and were 32%. Fiscal year 21, revenue was 43,602. Expenditures 27,198 and capital reserves of $16,404. The fiscal year 20 revenue was $44,239. Expenditures 30,383 and capital reserves of 13,856. The county overall for fiscal year 21, they had revenue of 3,000, 3,235,461 with expenditures of 2,328,133 for a total capital reserve of 907,328. And fiscal year 20, the revenue was 2,784,228. Expenditures of 3,276,330 with a total deficit of 492,102. Questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple questions. One of them, particularly for you. On page 38 in the packet that we got, under recycling operation, it says that the recycling budget is jointly funded through solid waste assessments from property owners in the scratch gravel district as well as the residential property owners in the corporate city limits for a fourplex or less. What is the, I guess, what's the purpose of the fourplex or less and how does that impact what's, how that fund is funded?
I'll defer to Director Lee.
I'll email.
Mayor, Commissioner, with the fourplex is where we look at it is that it goes to commercial. You're starting to get into the bigger apartment buildings. It goes in better with how our building department looks at a residential compared to a commercial. And so that's where we made the break working with the commission is it's no longer a residential assessment that we put onto the tax bill. It is going to be a commercial rate where they have a choice to be either to go with a private collector or with the city collection. And so that is just where the break went and that's where you go between commercial and residential.
Is that something that is, I was trying to look in the ordinances and I didn't see in there, which I probably missed it, but is that determined through ordinance? The reason I'm asking is because we are really, I mean, obviously with the growth policy, the, the city has said that higher density development is what we're looking for in a lot of places in town. So the likelihood of having more places with, that are more than a fourplex. I guess it strikes me as odd that it's not residential since it is, it would be residential buildings.
Mayor, Commissioner, it is how we assess the fee. If we do just a residential, depending on how we look at it, if we do per unit, then they would pay the 176 per unit, which I mean, if you start getting up that you have 200 units, that's a pretty large bill. And the bigger density, when you get into those type of situations, if you go commercial where we can work with you of how long you need to get there, you get the bigger containers that are out there. You don't have just individual containers to take care of just one resident. It works out a lot better and it ends up being a more realistic assessment of what we will be charging and then they will be paying. So it's just a, a better way of being able to take care of it. It isn't that it isn't residential. We knew all its commercial, but just in our matrix and how we pay it, it is just a more of an equitable way of looking at it.
Okay, that's helpful. I think it, this is more of a policy conversation I think we could have later on, but I think it might be worth talking about what it could look like for us to, I understand why that makes more sense, but that also makes me think that there is probably, for example, less recycling that's happening in these higher density places because from what I gathering, they, like, they don't have the little green pass that I use to get into the transfer station every weekend to drop off my recycling, right?
Mayor, Commissioner, they do not get, you know, if you're, if you're a renter, you do not get a pass to be able to go on to the transfer station. However, we do have a renter pass that they can get so that they can go and do the recycling. If they can't just go to one of the offsite ones.
Do they have to pay for that?
They do not.
Okay. I think maybe if we can figure out a way to streamline encouraging folks that are starting to live in higher density to be able to have an, an option to maybe recycle a little more. I think for a good example is because we don't have plastic in our roll-offs. Yeah, that's why I always go to the transfer station because it's, I can do it all at once. But I think that's more of a policy question for later on. The other question I had was on, I just had two more questions.
No, Commissioner, this is information only and so questions should be referred to them privately. And so when it's the information only, it's only information they're providing to us. So let's limit some of the questions.
Okay, so I'd be happy to submit my questions via email, but I think it'd be helpful if we could make some of those answers available to the public. I think one of them is around compost and how it works and where it goes and who uses it. And then the other piece is, is really explaining how, I think you guys did a really good job of explaining where, how the budgets work, but I think that there's the average person does not know what a tipping fee is. So I think kind of like the basic 101 would be super helpful of, you know, you're a renter. This is how you can participate in recycling. You are a homeowner. This is how you can, you know, get rid of your yard waste, et cetera.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. I can answer, just provide a real quick overview on that one is we are coming up and developing educational systems to be able to do exactly like that. Is this is what we recycle, where we recycle and how you'd be able to recycle some of that. It is a tipping fee is just tonnage that goes into our, our semis that go around and that's how we just keep everything equitable and know everything that's going around in that part. And then with the composting, there's two, we have two private companies that come in there. It's a subscription base. One where they take the composting offsite and they deal with compost, whatever they do, we make sure that it is being composted, not putting into the landfill. But as far as the Lewis and Clark and the city composting is we take it out to the landfill. We compost it and let it run by the county using our bio-waste from our wastewater facility. It is composted and then once we get it to a spot that it is usable, the county is now can, the city can get a portion of it and can use that, but they use it for reclamation of the cells that are out there, but they did pass a ordinance or a fee to be able to sell that to anyone that goes, goes around. There was an agreement that Valley View would, I can't remember. Valley View would come out there and screen it and they would get some of the composting and then they would sell it on their own. So they were actually selling the composting from the Lewis and Clark County and the city. So it has been on the market. It has been beneficial use, but majority of it has just been used for reclamation, not land cover, but when we close the cell, we use that to, to rectify it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Fever?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Director Ligon. How do you budget for deficits and then ending fund reserves? Because you have both in your reports here and I notice recycling has no reserve at all. I think I understand why, but you might want to explain that to me.
Mayor, Commissioner, on that one is we are looking at doing deficit spending at this time because we do have some cash reserves in specially residential. We're very close. We have not raised our rates in the past seven years and they've actually been deductions going down because of the efficiencies we've received between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena that, that plan. So it's going down and we are trying to just spend some of the cash down and not raise the rates until we get done with the integrated solid waste master plan. So we have the idea to be able to do it. And a lot of that spending is just to get new trucks, which as we talked about, we may not get it. So we're pretty comfortable with the deficit spending to be able to go down just to get some of the cash out there. And in the solid waste depart or division is we try not to go out and get loans. We try and build up our cash reserves over year over year to be able to use that for the capital instead of going out for loans. So that's kind of a brief explanation of why we're doing it at this point.
Well, just to follow up, you don't use reserves from one account or one fund to cover a deficit in another, or do you?
Mayor, Commissioner, we do not. That's why we have separate funds. They have to be independent of each other and we do not transfer money back and forth. And that is where you get into the recycling that it comes from the residential. And that is why we are just, the city is subsidizing the curbside recycling out of the residential. So we do not shift back and forth and play the shell game with the money. It is independent funds and we keep them independent.
And so my last note is it appears commercial is the greater deficit, at least within the city funds. Is that correct?
Mayor, Commissioner, could you repeat that question? I missed it.
Commercial of outlay is greater than a commercial revenue, yes?
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, it is at this point.
And has that been the trend for quite a while?
Mayor, Commissioner, no, it hasn't. It's kind of shifted and then we need to look at the matrix and that the commercial can vary considerably depending on what construction goes on with the roll-offs and is the private company and how we are getting different accounts such as Carroll College, the state. Different situations like that can greatly affect the, the revenue and also the expenditures. But we haven't been operating at that for very long because we would run out of money. But we are looking at, at all the matrix and everything in there. So we will be bringing it back in the next year or two after the integrated solid waste master plan to, to tell you what we should be charging.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate it.
Well, actually I might wait until bitter end.
We sit bitter in, what do you mean for public comments?
Yeah, well, maybe right before public comments is the question for the manager.
Okay, thank you, Director and Manager. Okay, final comments or questions from the commission?
Maybe that would be now, if that's okay. So, sorry about that. So I'm, I might be alone in my confusion here, but relative to, to our agenda. And this may be kind of a stylistic thing, but I think with our former manager, there was a, an idea that the administrative meetings would be a little less formal. Where we could have some discussion and, and this information only section was sort of created and, and it, at one time it was kind of put to us, I think by manager Harlock Schalk that, that maybe these, the items contained in information only were more or less sort of in the packet. And, and again, this may be where my confusion is, but in the packet, not necessarily for presentation and, and so I don't know if there's like, maybe some stylistic difference between the old and the new and, and so just maybe a question to the manager or interim manager relative to that, if that makes any sense.
Well, man, it was instituted by the former manager as once she said information only, you were right. The information is in the packet and we can look at it from the packet. But if we're trying to change it over to presentation, then let's just remove information only and let them go ahead and present. Then we can go ahead and do all the necessary questioning for presentation.
Go ahead. Thank you for that, Mayor and Commissioners. I think that the history of this meeting has been to make sure that before the commission is required to make a decision that you have the best information available to do so, regardless of the item. And I'm personally wasn't aware of an information only discussion. It'd be my recommendation that we just eliminate that phrase from future agendas so that you as the governing body get the information that you need prior to making a decision.
Got you. Any comments or disagreement on that? Okay, I don't see any race in. So I guess we will be removing information only and we'll be discussing the items fully.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, and just so you're aware, I did actually have a conversation just today with the executive assistant in the city manager's office. And I think we have a meeting scheduled even to discuss this very topic and others about the agendas. So just so you're aware.
Made up discussion. Okay, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do you have any race hands?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no hands raised online and no written public comment.
And final comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.